Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Maloney and Morse Premium, Ante Callarano. The acronym is ANPAC and the Chief Judge of Coastal Court. Today is Class 155, Class 155. What do we learn in Class 154? Well, we're still talking about decolonization, right? On behalf of who? On behalf of the Moors. The Moors have to learn that what has been our problem for decades? Well, we're colonized people, right? We're colonized people as Moors. And now we must do what? We must emerge as a sovereign, independent state if we want our rights back. But the only way to get your rights, you must do what? You must pledge allegiance to the state. And what's the name of the state? The Empire Morocco, and as the Moors commonly refer to as what? The Moroccan Empire, right? So in Class 154, what do we learn? We're starting to learn that the International Court of Justice, right? Is starting to school the Moors. How is it the International Court of Justice is schooling the Moors? Whereas the Moors are starting to learn, if you just go back and read the International Court of Justice cases regarding their advisory opinions and their rulings, they're starting to tell the Moors one thing that's very clear. That the Moors have to make a separation between church and state. What do I mean? You see, in the case of Western Sahara of the year 1975, Judge De Castro, right, of Spain, wrote an advisory opinion, right? His own opinion, his separate opinion. Starts to let the Moors know that there's such thing as a political tie to the state. And the state is tied to what? The land, i.e. the territory. Versus what? A religious tie to a religious order. And if the whole world has agreed to move on to understand, it's all about state rights. Right? It's all about state rights. We'll learn more about that today. It's about the state rights. The Moors have to pledge allegiance to what? The state. Right? Which is a separation from the church. That means Moors can still practice their religion, but they must pledge allegiance to the state in order to have a nationality. And the state recognizes defined territory of the land itself. So it must be a separation of what? Church and state. This is what we're learning from the International Court of Justice. If the Moors do not take the time to go back and look at case law, that means the Moors will always be in a status of what? Being colonized and naturalized. Because they're not going back to study what the International Court of Justice already ruled on. What the International Court of Justice already set forth as advisory opinions from the ICJ in terms of what the Moors have to do in terms of following what? Instructions. But what type of instructions? Instructions of international law. Which means we have to study the Charter of the United Nations of 1945. We also have to study what? The statutes of the International Court of Justice of 1946, Article 38, right? We'll talk about that today. But what else do the Moors have to continuously study? We have to study our own Moors treaties. I.e. our Moroccan treaties, because that's the nationality. What's the name of the state? Morocco. What's the nationality of the people? Moroccan. So therefore, when you study quote-unquote "Moors treaties", they're really what? Moroccan treaties. Therefore, we go back and study the treaties commonly known as the Madrid Convention of July 3rd, 1880. Article 15, Paragraph 1 says, "Any subject of Morocco..." Well, who are the subjects of Morocco? The Moors. "That's been what? Naturalized in a foreign country, shall return to Morocco and choose between the entire submission to the laws of the Empire of Morocco." So if the Moors don't follow the instructions of our own treaties and we're not following the instructions of international law, that means the Moors will always be colonized and naturalized forever. So what do the Moors have to do? Simply just follow instructions. Instructions of what? International law and Moroccan law. That must be understood, right? Let's get into the class. As the Moors know, I always open up the Constitution. The Constitution is paramount. What do I have up here on the screen? Well, ANPAC has revised their Constitution, right? We had a referendum and we thought it proper to establish new language within the Constitution. So now you got the Constitution of Maloney and Morse Premium, Ante Callarano, which the acronym is ANPAC. We have amendments from 28th February 2021, when we established the Constitution, through 16th September 2024, right? So we've updated the Constitution to make it more of a civilized Constitution. What does civilized mean? It means to start to understand more reforms and administrative reforms. In our previous Constitution, it had more language talked about what? Religious ties. And our newest Constitution is more derived to talk about language regarding administrative ties to the state. Also ties to the Empire Morocco as the mother state, the external state, the national state, the country itself, which is the Empire Morocco. That is the country. That is the mother state. But also, the newest Constitution is 106 articles. It has more administrative reforms as to how what? All states start to deal with how to reign in the order of their state through what's commonly known as an organized dual society of laws. Okay? So our newest Constitution has been revised. So as Moors started to come into the movement, you'll get a very, very, very similar Constitution, if not equivalent, alright? We'll talk about that more in the future. We'll start reading the Constitution a little bit more, alright? Now, the Constitution of ANPAC is tied to what? It's tied to the Constitution for the Empire Morocco, which is the mother state. So all Moors states, internal Moors states, come under the umbrella of the Empire Morocco's Constitution, which is the national state, is the country itself, right? So all Moors states, all internal Moors states come under the umbrella protections of the Constitution for the Empire Morocco, which is, that's just the cover page. This Constitution also has 106 articles, alright? So as the Moors know, we've established three branches of government for the Empire Morocco, this is what the Moors have any access of. We did not have our state established by recognition of a Constitution. And we never set up our three branches of government. Right? The Moors didn't have a Sultan overseeing the empire. There hasn't been a Sultan since 1956. So now we reinstated a Sultan as of the year 2024. Okay? So we started to set up the government, right, to restore the sovereignty of the Empire Morocco. Alright, so at the top, we're talking about what? The Empire Morocco, which is the external sovereign independent state, okay? And through the independent state, we have a Sultan, the Sultan is head of state, okay? So we reinstated Sultan. And underneath the Sultan, you have what? You have three branches of government. The first branch is what? Executive branch. It has the Prime Minister who's head of government. You got the legislative branch, right? You got your Speaker of the House who oversees all the seyahahs. Seyahahs are just basically your House members, they're legislators, right? And then you've got your judicial branch. And you got your Chief Judge who oversees other associate judges. So we've set up a tier structure of government, right? So now, what's the next stage? Now, the Empire Morocco is assisting Moors subjects, because that's the proper name of Moors in the treaties. They're not Moors Americans, they're Moors subjects. They're not black people, they're Moors subjects. That's the name of the treaties. So the Moors subjects now can learn how to return to Morocco according to the obligations of treaties and pledge allegiance to what? The Empire Morocco, the state. You see? So we can start to help the Moors now through what? We can start to help them through what's commonly known as the WRC, WRC Trusteeship Council, alright? So we set up a Trusteeship Council to assist the Moors to check all the applicable boxes in order to be recognized as Moroccan nationals again, alright? So the WRC Trusteeship Council works on behalf of the Empire Morocco, alright? So with that being said, we're going to continue to talk about, okay, what should be the proper mindset of the Moors subjects who've been trying to get out of the jurisdiction of the Europeans? Because it's all about jurisdiction, right? It's not about leaving the landmass. It's not about leaving the territory to go somewhere. It's about simply changing your political status on paper. It's all about being recognized by the state as being a Moroccan national versus being recognized as a naturalized American who used to be Moroccan, you see? So the Empire Morocco will continue to help the Moors, alright? So always remember, as the Moors start to come into understanding international law and getting assistance to be recognized as Moroccan nationals, always remember this. Knowledge is free at the WRC. The Empire Morocco does not charge anybody to learn about statehood. We don't charge anybody not one single penny to fill out any forms, anything. There's no charge for people to learn about how to be recognized as Moroccans. So knowledge is free at the WRC. That must be understood. Because you got a lot of Moors out there that's charging people to learn about Moroccan law. You're charging people to learn how to be a Moors American, this is shameful. If we're calling ourselves family, then you don't charge your family, you just help your family. So you must understand, ANPAC Study Session is letting all the Moors know that knowledge is free at the WRC and we will help you to get your sovereign rights back for free, alright? And then once you get on the inside and now you're recognized Moroccan national, we'll still continue to help you with all kinds of documents for what? For free. Why? Because we're all family. We're all Moroccans. That must be understood. Alright, let's continue. So, as we start to move forward and recognizing the Empire Morocco and pledging allegiance to the state, we must understand it's all about patriotism. We must have love for our country, we must have love for our own biological mother state. And how is she recognized? She's recognized by the flag. This is the Empire Morocco flag. This is not the Kingdom of Morocco's flag. The Kingdom of Morocco's flag is for Arabs. This is the Empire Morocco flag for Moors. That must be understood. So this is the mother flag for the Empire Morocco. And all of us have to pledge allegiance to the state and the state recognize this flag. And this flag recognizes the state. This flag represents what? That we're all for one and one for all. We're one people, of one state, of one nationality, as what? Moroccans. That's the bottom line, alright? Let's continue. Today, we'll continue to study and understand that in international law, the Moors must follow instructions. The instructions have been out, at the very least, since 1945, right? Regarding what? The Charter of the United Nations of 1945. And then you have the statutes of the International Court of Justice came out when? 1946, right? And it's 70 articles, okay? So today, we'll continue to study, okay? How do the Moors get their rights back? They get it back with a pin. What type of pin? A competent pin. Well, what makes you have a competent pin? That you're the competent authority of your state, meaning you're a state official. Well, what recognizes you as a state official? It's the constitution of the state that recognizes your official office because it's written in this Constitution. Or the Constitution starts to get into what's called enumerated powers, right? Or implied powers or resulting powers, where we start to recognize different offices of the state. So your competency, your power comes from the fact you hold a pin because you are what? A representative of the state, you're an official of the state. But what actually recognizes the state is your state constitution. That's what recognizes the state, alright? So that's what the Moors have to understand. So today, we'll continue to learn more about how do the Moors get their rights back of what? Sovereignty. Well, one of the things the Moors will quickly understand if in fact we follow the instructions is that we have to make a separation of church and state, alright? So listen up. What do I have up here? I have the Statutes of the International Court of Justice, okay? Statute of the International Court of Justice, we're going to go down to what? Article 38. I've been talking about it, right? Listen, go down to Article 38. Okay, so let's read Article 38 of the Statutes of the International Court of Justice. Noah?
Article 38. One, the court whose function is to decide in accordance with international law, such disputes as are submitted to it shall apply. Eight, international conventions, whether general or particular, establishing rules expressly recognized by the contesting states. B, international custom as evidence of a general practice accepted as law. C, the general principles of law recognized by civilized nations.
Alright, thank you. So Article 38 of the Statutes of the International Court of Justice starts talking about what do all what? States, right? What do all states have to recognize as law? They recognize international law. Who recognizes international law? States, right? States is about state rights, right? But then they come down and you go down to Section C. So Article 38, Section C, as in Charlie, starts to talk about what? It says, "The general principles of law recognized by civilized nations." You see that? So what do they mean by civilized nations? Why would they put that in the Statutes of the International Court of Justice? It's because it's what? United Nations, it's the Charter of the United Nations. What are nations? Countries, i.e. states. And they're united in their efforts to create what? Standards, right? And standard operating procedures. You got standards of law, you got standards of procedure. So they say anybody who recognizes international law and international law recognizes states, then they would consider you to have a civilized nation if in fact you pledge allegiance to what? The state. Listen, what does civilized mean? Noah?
Civilized is an adjective. One, at an advanced stage of social and cultural development.
So civilized means you're at advanced stage. You're at advanced, advanced stage. Advanced stage of social and cultural development. Advance is key word, advance. Okay? But advance what? Now let's go back to Article 38 of the Statutes of the International Court of Justice. So civilized means advanced, right? Advanced what? Nations. What's a nation? That's a country or state. So it's advanced nations, advanced states, advanced country. So when the people establish a state, they consider them what? An advanced nation, an advanced country. Because you recognize what? The state. Okay, listen, let's go back to civilized, I'm not done. Okay, civilized means what? Let's look at some other things. Okay, let's look at some synonyms for civilized, okay? Noah?
Adjective or similar and opposite words, adjective. One, polite and well-mannered, enlightened, educated, advanced, developed, cultured. The opposite is uncivilized and barbaric.
Listen. So the United Nations is recognizing civilized nations as people who recognize international law and they have established what? A state. So therefore, they're in advanced status. But the opposite of civilized is what? Barbaric, you see that? Uncivilized was the opposite of civilized? Uncivilized and what? Barbaric, you see that? So what do they call the Moors back in the day? Berbers, i.e. what? Barbarians, you see? They're trying to say the Moors are what? Uncivilized. Why? Because they were not pledging allegiance to the state. They run around as what? Tribes. Nomads. The Moors are not recognizing the sovereignty of a country. They were running around with their separatism of tribes. And the whole world was moving past tribal status. They were moving towards what status? Political status of you're tied to what? The mother state. And the mother state oversees all what? Internal states. So when you see barbaric, it says right here. Opposite of civilized is what? Uncivilized, but it's a barbaric. So all the Moors, a lot of Moors work at what? The barber shop. Moors work at the barber shop. See right here? Barber, barber, barbaric. So what do they say out loud regarding law? That the Moors are still living a status of what? Arcade, old school, that we did not learn how to keep up with the advanced society that the world had moved on to establish what? States. Listen, what's the verb? Verb for civilized.
Verb. One, bringing a place or people to a stage of social and cultural development considered to be more advanced.
So people who recognize the state are more advanced. See what civilized is telling us, just this one word? You gotta see what's happening here. So if we go back to the Statutes of the International Court of Justice, Article 38, okay? Article 38. International law recognizes states. Contesting states, any states, right? And those states are in a status of being what? A civilized nation. Because they're in advanced what? Stage of development, because they're moving forward with contemporary law. And the Moors are stuck in what? A primitive status. They're stuck in a primitive status, okay? Listen, what do I have up here on the board? On the screen, I should say. We're going to take a look at what's the meaning of civilized nations. Now, let me just say this as a side note. Anybody who's heard me talk about civilized nations in the last few classes of the Statutes of the International Court of Justice that never took the time to look up the word civilized nations or go look up the Statutes of the International Court of Justice, Article 38, then shame on you. How are we ever going to advance if we don't take the time to go look up this information? Because we gotta follow the instructions. If we don't read the instructions, how are we ever going to advance? Listen, what is this about to have on the board? What's about international law, right? And the International Law Committee, the commissions get together and they have reports, right? The commissions get together on an international level and they have what's called repertoires or repertoireers, okay? So we're going to read a little bit about what is the definition of civilized nations? Let's get an understanding. Because Moors got to get to a point where if they want to be colonized, you have to follow the instructions of what? International law. And international laws recognizes who? Civilized nations. What's a civilized nation? That means the people who pledge allegiance to a state and now they're in a bad status. And they're no longer acting what? Barbaric. You're no longer acting like berbers and barbarians. You gotta understand what's happening here. Listen, alright. So we're going to read a little bit about this, okay? Brother Dre?
General principle of law. A, introduction, 202. The commission at its 70th session in 2018 decided to include the topic, general principles of law in its program of work and appointed Mr. Marcelo Vazquez Bermides as special repertoire.
Okay, so this is about 2018. A commission got together in 2018, right? To talk about the status of civilized nations, et cetera. Alright, listen, because Moors have to understand this, alright? Let's read the introduction. Dre?
Introduction by the special repertoire, the first report, 208. The special repertoire introduced his report by making some general observations. He noted that general principles of law are an important component of the international legal system and that this source of international law could be usefully clarified by the commission almost a century after its inclusion in Article 38 of the Statute of the Permanent Court of International Justice.
Okay, let's go down. So what are they talking about already? Article 38, right? So Article 38. When the covenant of the League of Nations, right? The covenant of the League of Nations, when France is overseeing the covenant of the League of Nations from the year 1920 until 1946, what was that court called? That court was called the Statute of what? Of the Permanent Court of International Justice. From 1920 to 1946. So this is why they say it's almost been a century. You see that? It says almost a century, almost a century. What's a century? 100 years. And this report came out 2018, you see? So at the time, that was 98 years since the establishment of the old court system under the covenant of the League of Nations. But now, they've transferred those principles of the League of Nations Court over to what? The ICJ. So the covenant of the League of Nations from 1920 to 1946 and then the Charter of the United Nations was from 1945 until present. But all the principles of the court system, the rules, regulations, the statutes of the covenant of the League of Nations, was transferred, those principles were transferred over to what? Charter of the United Nations and the statutes of the International Court of Justice, okay? Listen, they're still talking Article 38, listen. Draft conclusion number two, Dre?
Requirement of recognition for a general principle of law to exist, it must be generally recognized by states.
Read it again.
Requirement of recognition for a general principle of law to exist, it must be generally recognized by states.
So you can see this is all about states, states, states. Did it say, did it say, for a general principle of law to exist, it must be generally recognized by the church?
No.
No. It says, "For a general principle of law to exist..." Law. What type of law? Public law. "It must be generally recognized by states." "It must be generally recognized by states." What should be generally recognized by states? The existence of law. So who create laws? States. You see that? Moors got to follow instructions. This was from 2018. Who create law? States. That must be understood. Not the church. Listen, that's not about civilized nations. This is important for the Moors, right? Taking my time, it's important for the Moors to understand because the Moors have been miseducated, alright? Section 217, brother Dre from the top.
217. Part four of the report provides first an initial assessment of Article 38, Paragraph 1, Section C of the Statute of the International Court of Justice.
Pause, read again.
Part four of the report provides first an initial assessment of Article 38, Paragraph 1, Section C of the Statute of the International Court of Justice.
Alright, so what should we pause right there and understand? Let's go back. We're talking about what? Article 38 of the International Court of Justice talked about what? Civilized nations, Section C. Follow me? Okay, let's get a definition of civilized nations. So we're going to come back, we're going to come back to Section 217. But first, I want you to see this. Part four of the report provides first an initial assessment of Article 38, Paragraph 1, Section C of the Statutes of the International Court of Justice. And what is Article 38, Paragraph 1, Section C about? Civilized nations. So let's go down to the definition, right? Let's see what international law, what they say about the definition of civilized nations. Okay, we'll come back to Section 217, okay? Alright, we'll jump down to 220. Okay, Dre from the top.
Alright, Section 220. As to the term civilized nations, the special repertoire considered that it should not cause major difficulties for the work of the commission. He noted that while this term may have, may have had a particular meaning in the past, it has become ericanistic and should be avoided. Taken into account existing practice and the principle of sovereign equality, this term must be understood as referring to all states of the international community.
Read it again. Okay, brother Dre, let's take it from the top again, Section 220.
Section 220. As to the term civilized nations, the special repertoire considered that it should not cause major difficulties for the work of the commission. He noted that while this term may have had a particular meaning in the past, it has become anachronistic and should be avoided. Taking into account existing practice and the principle of sovereign equality, this term may, must be understood as referring to all states of the international community.
Pause, okay, so what's happening? So in 20, the year 2018, they said the word civilized nation is an old school word. Why do they say that? Why do they say that? Because in the twenty-first century, they said, if people don't understand the definition of civilized nation by now, then it's tied to what? The word state. And let's not keep using the word civilized nation because it could be a little insensitive, right? You call someone uncivilized. So to be politically correct, they just say, look, everybody by now should already understand civilized nation means what? That you recognize it's all about state rights. That's what it's coming down to, alright, so listen to me. Alright, section two twenty. As to the term civilized nations, he noted that while this term may have had a particular meaning in the past, it has become anachronistic and should be avoided. Taking into account existing practice.
See, now they're talking existing, right?
Current day, twenty eighteen. And the principle of sovereign equality, what is sovereign equality tied to? Says what? This term must be understood as referring to all states. So your sovereign equality is tied to what? What is sovereign equality tied to? What is sovereign equality tied to what? States, you see that? So they're saying, don't say the word civilized nation, just say your sovereign equality is based in your allegiance to the state. And the state is what? Sovereign, the state is sovereign. And the state does what? It extends sovereignty to the government and the people. Because the people recognize the state, we, the people, are the organic people that recognize the abstract state, but we give the abstract state all the power, that way we can be governed what? Equally. Then we turn around, we vote in our elected officials of the government and they maintain the laws of the state equally amongst all of the nationals of the state. You see? So this is what Moors gotta understand, we gotta pledge allegiance to what? The state, because that's where the sovereignty is. You see? Listen, now let's go back up to section twenty seventeen. Because this is what Moors have to understand, alright, from the top.
Um, section two seventeen, part four of the report provides first an initial assessment of Article thirty-eight, paragraph one, section C of the statute of the International Court of Justice, which refers to the general principles of law recognized by civilized nations. The special repertoire identified three interrelated elements, namely, uh, general principles of law, recognized and civilized nations. Part four also addressed the question of the origins of general principles of law. The special repertoire stressed that the position of the commission on this latter question would be decisive as to how the topic would be addressed in the future.
Alright, so civilized nations are now just recognized as statehood, right? And everybody's recognizing international law governs all states. So civilized nations is what? Just simply a state, at, at an advanced stages, you see? Continue to eighteen.
Section two eighteen, the special repertoire raised the question whether general principles of law, in the sense of Article thirty-eight, paragraph one, section C of the statute of the International Court of Justice, share any characteristics with the general principles that exist in national legal systems. He noted that while it, while it may be said that they share some common features, such as their function of filling gaps, their characteristics are probably to be distinguished due to the structural differences between the international legal system and national legal systems.
Pause, alright. So their tied this word, uh, civilized nations to state rights and state rights is recognized under Article thirty-eight, paragraph one, subsection C of the statutes of the International Court of Justice. So if Moors don't follow the instructions that's recognized by the United Nations and the International Court of Justice and we don't become an advanced people to recognize our allegiance to the state, that means A, we're stateless and it also means what? We're uncivilized and dare I say barbaric. All because we have a pledged allegiance to our own biological mother state as we're going through varying stages of decolonization. Right, so we have to understand this, listen, it's all about the state. Now if we talk a little bit about the definition of civilized nations, because I've used that word quite often, but have the Moors taken the time to look the word up to get a basic fundamental understanding of it. Moors keep saying they study civics. Well, how is it that the Moors did not understand the fact that the Moors still colonized, naturalized and still operating as what? Uncivilized. Because we're not at varying stages of development to reestablish the state. This is what's going on amongst who? Moors, Americans and people call themselves black, i.e. copper-colored people. We have to study what? International law. If we study international law, international laws recognizes what? Public law that's recognized by who? States, that's Article thirty-eight. Statutes of the International Court of Justice says it's all about the recognition of states that recognize international law. Do the Moors recognize international law as being the law? No. Do Moors recognize the state as being the law? No. Therefore, the Moors are not in what? They're not in an advanced stage of development according to the word civilized. Therefore, we're not at advanced stage of recognizing international law and statehood for the empire Morocco, which the Moors commonly refer to as what? The Moroccan Empire. That means that we're still what? Colonized and naturalized as what? Naturalized Americans, naturalized names of the European states. The Moors are named after their adopted mother. Your adopted mother called you American, your adopted mother called you Canadian, your adopted mother called you British, your adopted mother called you German, your adopted mother called you French, your adopted mother called you Dutch, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. When are Moors gonna wake up and recognize they have to pledge allegiance back to their biological mother? And her name is what? The empire Morocco for who? Moroccans. Therefore, we will be in an advanced stage of being a civilized nation because we recognize our biological mother state. Let's continue, what do I, what do I have up here? We're gonna continue reading a little bit more about the Western Sahara case of nineteen seventy-five. What about the Western Sahara case? Well, we're going over separate opinion of Judge De Castro. Right, so Moors go to Western Sahara case, their advisory opinion of nineteen seventy-five. Look up their advisory opinion, the separate opinion of Judge De Castro of Spain. And Judge De Castro is talking about who? The independent Moors, you see that? He's talking about the independent Moors and who else? The Sultan. And that's on page what? Page one fifty of his separate opinion, right? And Judge De Castro is talking about the independent Moors and the Sultan. When you talk about the Moors, you have to talk about the Sultan. When you talk about the Sultan, you have to talk about the Moors. And anybody who's not talking about Moors and Sultan in the same conversation are wasting their time. You still have a primitive mentality if you don't recognize the Sultan. This, the International Court of Justice is pointing this out for Moors, so Moors can follow instructions. What is the ICJ already pointing out? The Moors have to recognize who? The Sultan. If you wanna decolonize and keep calling yourself what? A Moroccan of the empire of Morocco. What's the title, title of the head of state of Morocco? It is the Sultan. The empire of Morocco is who? The Sultan, Moors already know this. So if you're not recognizing the Sultan, then how is it you run around calling yourself a Moor? Because the word Moor is a short title for what? Moroccan. Moroccan is the nationality of what? Morocco. Who's the leader of Morocco? The Sultan. So you got Sultan, Morocco, right? Nationality Moroccan, short title is what? Moor. And since they called us the short title Moor, they turn around and call us what? Moorish. You see? So everybody calls himself Moorish or Moor, is really calling himself Moroccan, which means you gotta recognize the state, you know, to be officially Moroccan. And you keep, gotta recognize His Majesty, the Sultan. The Sultan and the Moors are one. Listen, on page one thirty-five, we've gone over this before, but let's, let's backtrack a little bit as a refresher, okay? So on page one thirty-five, Judge De Castro is talking about the legal ties with the territory. Alright, so legal ties is this subsection, C, right? For just a moment, versus what? Versus religious ties, you see that? So Judge De Castro is making a distinction between religious ties. You know, he says religious ties, but he never mentions what? Territory. He said religious ties, he never mentioned the word territory, which means he never mentioned the word land, which means he's not talking about what? The sovereign state. You go back up, listen, you go back up to page one thirty-five, he's talking about what? Legal ties to what? Look what he's doing, he's trying to tell the Moors the answer to the test. The Moors, the legal tie with the territory, right? And the territory is tied to what? He goes down, he tells you the answer to the test is tied to what? Ties, ties of sovereignty is to what? The state. He said your ties are what? We've read this before, your ties, let's pick it up from here, second paragraph. Brother Dre, the words.
The words, the legal ties between this territory and the kingdom of Morocco indicate the category of ties envisaged, thank you, uh, the cool jur, jurists between a territory, which is the object of the ties in question, and a body public which is a state. What is involved is the state ties related to two specific areas, uh, the Rio de Oro and the Saki El Hamra. Their legal nature is made plain by the relation existing between the two questions. In the first question, the court was asked whether or not the territory had been a territory belonging to no one, um, sans matter in the French text. The second question supplementing the first amounted to asking who, if the territory was not without a master, had it been its master or owner at the time of colonization by Spain?
Pause. So Judge De Castro is immediately talking about the legal ties between a territory. And he starts to define, it says, the territory is tied to what? The state. What is involved in this is the state ties. So state ties is connected to what? Legal ties, i.e. political ties. Anytime you hear the word political, you're talking about a tie to what? The state. Right? So Judge De Castro starts making distinction between the legal tie to the state, right? Because that was the question he put right here. He says, okay, what's the legal ties with the territory? Then he jumps down, he starts talking about religion, listen. So on page one forty-eight. Page one forty-eight, he's starting to talk about religious ties. Now let's listen to what he has to say, we've gone over this before. We're gonna go a little deeper, a little deeper today, alright? Because Moors have to start understanding the separation between church and state, if in fact we want to be colonized, alright? Okay, brother Dre from the top.
Two, religious ties.
Pause. Did it say religious ties to the territory?
No.
No. It just said religious ties, but he's not mentioning territory now, which means he's not talking about the state. He's talking about your personal allegiance to some individual of what? Of religion. Which is not recognized as a political tie, it's recognized as a religious tie. You must make the distinction between church and state. See how he's making the distinction? He's not talking territory. Listen, brother Dre.
Belonging to Dar, um, Dar al Islam is a powerful tie. The world of the Muslim believers is opposed to that of the unbelievers, Dar ahhar, an opposition which justifies the call for mutual help in cases of a holy war jihad. It is a tie which is not to be confused with legal or political ties.
Pause, so religious ties, Dre.
Is a tie which is not to be confused with legal or political ties.
Let's read again, religious ties.
It is a tie which is not to be confused with legal or political ties.
See that? So it has to be a separation of what? Church and state. Let's take it to the board real quick. What do I have here? Okay. At the top it says what? Decolonization reforms require a separation of church and state. Right, so the judge just said, right here said, religious tie is a tie which is not to be confused with legal or political ties. You must separate the two, don't get them what? Confused. He said, don't get them confused. It's not, it is not religious ties, religious ties, listen. Religious ties, religious ties is not to be confused with legal or political ties. But what is legal political tie? Political tie to what? The territory, i.e. the what? State. Let's take it to the board. Decolonization reforms require a separation of church and state because even the judges don't what? They're separating them. And not to be what? Confused. Listen, I have two columns up here, alright? We went over this in the last class, let's, let's go over it again, okay? So first in this column is about what? The state. And column number two is about what? The church. You must separate what? Church and state, but which comes first? The state, why? Because it's about what? Civilized nations recognize state rights. Un, un-civilized people keep recognizing what? Church, which is religious rights, religious what? Ties, because you keep recognizing the church as being what? Supreme. But who's actually supreme? The state, because the world has advanced itself and the Moors are still stuck in what? A status of Berber. The Moors are still stuck, stuck in a status of barbarian. You see what I'm saying? That's why Moors have barber shops, the barbarians are still stuck in tribalism. They're still stuck in claiming themselves as being part of what? The church, the temple. And they continue to pledge allegiance to the church instead of pledge allegiance to the state because what? Your sovereign equality comes from the state. You can go to church whenever you want, that's second. Whatever religious practice you have, that's your private relationship to your religious order. But what runs the world? States. For who? Civilized nations. You gotta see what the International Court of Justice is trying to tell the Moors. The Moors have delayed their own justice because they have not recognized the state. They continue to recognize what? The church. Because they keep saying all your rights are derived through what? The Moors' science temple. They say your birthright's come through the Moors' science temple. Is that what international law said? No. Listen, because the Moors gotta understand this, because if we don't understand this, we'll always be colonized people. I know this is systematic, but we gotta talk about, we gotta tell the truth, alright? Let's study. Alright, so column one's about the state, column two's about the church, okay, listen. So states come first because it's about state rights and law. It's about your political tie, right? It's about your political tie to what? The state. And the state has what? A constitutional state with three branches of government. And the state has what? The state is what? The empire and the empire has an empire flag, right? It's a national flag. Also, the state is what? The state has Moroccan nationals. And when you have the state, you're no longer what? Colonized, you're now what? Decolonized, but what has to be colonized? Both the state and what? The people. Because the people have a nationality of Moroccan that's recognized by what? Or who's? The state. So we hit the second column, we got the church, which is second in law because of separation of church and state. There's what? State rights and then there's what? Church rights. But church rights are subordinated to state rights. Because the state protects what? The church, the state puts the church under protection. That way you can practice your religion. You see? Listen, so the second column about the church, which is religious ties to what? The church. And most churches have what? There are chartered religious organizations and corporations. Right? And a lot of these temples, Moors' science temple, keeps recognizing the kingdom of Morocco's flag. Which is the flag of a nation in Africa. Which is the flag of a nation in Africa. That's the kingdom and not the empire. Listen. So everybody in this second column are still naturalized Americans as an example, cause you're naturalized. And this means you're still what? Colonized. You see? So what's happening here, when you take a look at these two boxes, one is the legal political tie and one is what? Religious tie, you see? And on this side of second equation, second column, they're saying, everybody over here who has not pledged their allegiance to the state are what? Uncivilized. Not because of your religion, it's because you failed to pledge allegiance to the state, and you keep thinking that the church is equivalent to the state, and this is why Moors run around and lie in everybody's face and say the temple is a state. So they're intermixing both what? Church and state. And the ICJ has told you what? You cannot what? You cannot confuse what? Religious ties with legal or political ties. You can't confuse the two. The Moors have created this hybrid right in the middle, right? To say they got what? If their church is what? A state. And that's a lie. You understand what's happening? So if the Moors ever want to be colonized, you gotta follow instructions and pledge allegiance to the state. But what's the name of the state? Empire Morocco, right? Listen. Let's continue to read about religious ties. What did the ICJ trying to tell the Moors? Okay, from the top, brother Drake.
Um, belonging to, uh, Dar al Islam is a powerful tie. The world of the Muslim believers is opposed to that of the unbelievers, uh, Dar ahhar, and opposition which justifies the call for mutual help in cases of a holy war jihad. It is a tie which is not to be confused with legal or political ties. Um, with the advent of the abbasids, the Muslim community system became blurred with the emergence of the provincial spirit. Amiad Spain and Idris Morocco split off from the rest of the Muslim empire. Other defections took place in the Orient itself. The populations of those countries then considered that they constituted real self-governing entities.
Pause, go ahead. Alright, so this is the reference point down here, okay? So the judge was referencing, uh, something from, from Rabat in nineteen sixty-eight, page one ten, he also pages one fourteen, et cetera. So he was giving a reference point, but let's, let's read what he quoted. Judge Castro, listen to what he says. With the advent of the abbasids, the Muslim community system became blurred with the emergence of the provincial spirit. What's happening? As religion came in, things started to get blurred, what happened? Confusion started, you see? Said blurry, something blurry makes it confusion, it's confusion, right? Becomes ambiguous, becomes a gray area, it's getting blurred because religion's coming in. Listen. With the advent of the abbasids, the Muslim community system became blurred with the emergence of the provincial spirit. What's provincial mean? Moors creating tribes as provincial tribes. Right, listen. Amiad, Spain and Idris, Morocco split off from the rest of the Muslim empire. See, splits were happening. Splits are happening, keep in mind, what's the title? What's the title? He's talking what? Religious ties. So now he comes down here, he's quoting at the IC, at the ICJ, people were putting reference points on the record, and he's going back and quoting the reference points. Listen. With the advent of the abbasids, the Muslim community system became blurred with the emergence of the provincial spirit. Amiad, Spain and Idris, Morocco split off from the rest of the Muslim empire. There's splits going on. Listen. Other defections took place in the Orient itself. So he's talking blurbs, blurred, he's talking splits, he's talking defections. Do these sound like positive verbs? No. Listen. The populations of those countries then considered that they constituted real self-governing entities. Meaning the Moors that they split off and they were creating religious organizations and corporations, they were considering their religious status as a what? Political entity. Can't be done. Only the state is a political entity. The church is not a political entity, it's a religious entity. You gotta make a separation of church and state, you gotta see what the ICJ is trying to tell the Moors in advance. This was nineteen seventy-five, listen to me. Let's, let's move on to the next section. Okay, right here, brother Drake.
Over the centuries, the greater part of the Moroccan population was to show itself, uh, show itself as faithful to its faith, as it was attached to the independence, uh, Terahasi, history du, du Maroc. Uh, the second, uh, page, uh, four twenty-four. Islam, which proved, uh, which proved unable to cement Moroccan unity, did not deeply bind Morocco to the outside world. All the Islam did was to give a legal form to the deep-seated exonophobia of the Moroccan populations.
Alright, read again.
Over the centuries, the greater part of the Moroccan population was to show itself as faithful to its faith, as it was attached to its independence. Islam, which proved unable to cement Moroccan unity, did not deeply bind Morocco to the outside world. All that Islam did was get, was to give it a legal form to the deep-seated exonophobia of the Moroccan populations.
Alright, what's it saying here? Keep in mind, Judge Castro is quoting reference points that was submitted in his advisory opinion from the Kingdom of Morocco, Mauritania, Spain, et cetera. So the judge is just reading reference points out loud, he's quoting it, listen. He says, quote, "Over the centuries, the greater part of the Moroccan population was to show itself as faithful to its faith, as it was attached to its independence." So the Moors' independence came through faith, but their independence was not based on what? State recognition. Their independence was coming from their faith and not recognition of the state. But as the world started moving forward, everybody had a pledge allegiance to what? The states, cause the world said it's about state rights and your independence does not come through a religious organization. Now keep in mind, he already said that Islam was separating the Moors, cause the Moors had all types of different religions. You see? Listen. It says, "Islam, which proved unable to cement Moroccan unity, did not deeply bind Morocco to the outside world." Let me read it again, let's comprehend, let's comprehend, it's not pronounced words. Let's actually comprehend when we're reading forensics. To read means what? To use forensics to comprehend your reading, read between the lines, listen. Islam, which proved unable to cement Moroccan unity, so Islam did not bring Moroccan unity together. Which means the Moors were not recognizing the Empire Morocco and the Moroccan nationality. They were too busy infighting over religious statuses. And not paying attention to the Moroccan unity, they were fighting over religious sects. They were fighting over religious organizations. Which caused us as Moors to lose our Moroccan nationality, cause we were too busy pledging allegiance to what? Religious orders. I'll read it again. Islam, which proved unable to submit Moroccan unity, did not deeply bind Morocco to the outside world. What do they mean the outside world? Isn't that kinda strange? It did not, it did not. Islam did not deeply bind Morocco to the outside world. What's the outside world? The world was establishing what? States. And the Moors run around talking about religion and pledging allegiance to religious orders instead of establishing state rights. And those people who had state rights saw the Moors as being what? Uncivilized. Cause we run around with the tribes, instead of establishing state rights. So it says right here, "Islam did not deeply bind Morocco to the outside world." Morocco started becoming antiquated. It was falling behind, it was not advancing, it, it stayed in a primitive status. What does primitive mean? Primy. We were not advancing with the rest of the world to recognize statehood. You gotta see what the judge is saying, keep in mind, Judge Castro, he's not just saying this on his own, he's reading reference points out loud. What should the Moors take away from this thus far? That if we ever try to go to ICJ talking about, we got a religious tie, guess what they gonna tell us? It's absurd. You gotta have a tie to what? The state. Listen, there must be a separation of church and state, I'm gonna read it from the top again. Over the centuries, the greater part of the Moroccan population, so what's the nationality of Moors? Moroccan, you see he said Moroccan population? He's talking Moors, I started off today showing you they was talking about who? The independent Moors. So what is the Moors nationality? Moroccan, it's Moroccan population. Independent Moors of Morocco. And your nationality is Moroccan, that's the population. So why Moors run around saying that they're the true American? When it's the empire of Morocco for who? Moroccans, and this is why Noor Drahli said we're descendants of Moroccans. Noor Drahli didn't say, I'm, he didn't say singular, I'm a descendant, he said, we're, as in plural, as in what? Population. The people, the Moors are Moroccans. So what happened next? He gets assassinated and all the Moors come out the temple and say they're what? They're true Americans. And they tell you what? To enforce the Constitution of United States of America to remain naturalized Americans, and Noor Drahli trying to tell you, you're what? Moroccan, because the people are Moroccan, the population is Moroccan and not American. Because you're in Morocco, even the United States of America said they're in Morocco. Listen. We gotta get past this, Moors. We gotta understand, it's okay to practice your religion. But you gotta understand, religion is what's kept us what? In a primitive status, we have not advanced. The whole world's passed by the Moors, and the Moors wanna keep blaming white folks for our problems. And the reality is, Moors have delayed their own justice, because they don't read the International Court of Justice articles such as Article thirty-eight, that said we have to be a civilized nation, and what's a civilized nation? An advanced population of Moroccans who recognize the Empire Morocco state. Cause that comes first. Moors keep saying love, truth, peace, freedom, and justice, but they're not reading the International Court of Justice statutes. They're not reading either advisory opinions from ICJ to let you know that it's okay to practice Islam. But that has created separation of the Moroccan empire. Because of religion, let's read again, it's not my words, let's read the ICJ said. So over the centuries, the greater part of the Moroccan population was to show itself as faithful to its faith, as it was attached to its independence. Islam, which proved unable to submit Moroccan unity. Moors keep saying, well, how are we gonna come together? It starts with calling yourself Moroccan. It starts with understanding you are Moroccan. And if you don't even understand the fact that you're Moroccan, then there will be no unity. Cause they're telling you right here, Islam, which proved unable to submit Moroccan nationality, i.e. unity. It's about unity, Moors. The colonists know that the Moors have no what? Unity. Cause they don't even know they're what? Moroccan. You see what the ICJ is trying to tell the Moors? This is sad, this has been out since nineteen seventy-five, fifty years. Listen. Says Islam. Islam, which proved unable to submit Moroccan unity, did not deeply bind Morocco to the outside world. Meaning what? The new world or the contemporary law to recognize state rights, the Moors stated in the old world, recognizing what? Religious ties. We're stuck in the past. The whole world moved on to the present. Let's continue. What do I have up here? I gotta show Moors examples, cause Moors don't get it. What I have up here is the First Amendment, it's called the Establishment Clause. Okay, listen. On the United States, First Amendment. I'm only using this as an example, cause Moors love to read the Constitution of the United States. But yet they never comprehended what they were reading, cause Moors don't read, they skim, they assume, because they're all in what? Follieship and worship, instead of being in what? Scholarship, uh, research. This is what Moors gotta understand. Watch how easy I do this, watch this. What is the United States First Amendment? Okay. Brother Joseph.
First Amendment, Congress shall make no laws respecting an establishment of religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances.
What's important here, what's germane? The first part. Congress shall make no law respecting establishment of religion. Congress will make no law respecting the establishment of religion. That's the First Amendment. What, what do we comprehend from that already? The Moors keep saying their rights are derived through the Moors Science Temple, and the temple is what? A church, i.e. under what? Religious status. And the Moors keep saying they want the United States to recognize the Moors' rights. But in the First Amendment, right off the top, it says, Congress shall make no law respecting establishment of religion. Now time out. Let's, let's, let's go deeper. So the United States has come back and said, okay, what does the First Amendment mean? They came up with what's called the First Amendment Establishment Clause. Now shame on the Moors, they don't know nothing about what we're about to read, cause they claim they've been studying the Constitution of the United States. I can't tell, listen. From the top, brother Joseph.
The First Amendment Establishment Clause. The First Amendment Establishment Clause prohibits the government from making any law respecting an establishment of religion. This clause not only forbids the government from establishing an official religion, but it also prohibits government action.
Listen, we're going to Cornell Law School, let's read a little bit about this. Cause Moors gotta understand, there must be a separation of what? Church and state, I'm gonna show you that even the United States separates it. Why? Cause it's all about state rights, because international law recognize who? Civilized nations who recognize the state first, and then you have no private law, practice of religion, cause that's private. But this is public, it comes first. So I'm gonna show the example, even the United States talks about this. Brother Joseph.
Establishment Clause. The First Amendment Establishment Clause prohibits the government from making any law respecting an establishment of religion. This clause not only forbids the government from establishing an official religion, but also prohibits government actions that unduly favor one religion over another. It also prohibits the government from unduly performing religion over non-religion, or non-religion over religion. Although some government action implicating religion is permissible and indeed unavoidable, it is not clear just how much the Establishment Clause tolerates. In the past, the Supreme Court has permitted religious invocations to open legislative sessions. Uh, case law, public funds to be used for private religious school bussings, case law, and textbooks and university funds to be used to print and publish student religious groups, publications, case law. Conversely, the court has ruled against some overtly religious displays at courthouses, case law. State funding supplementing teacher salaries at religious schools, case law. And some overly religious holiday decorations on public, case law. One point of contingent regarding the Establishment Clause is how to frame government actions that implicate religion. Framing questions often arise in context of permanent religious monuments on public land. Although it is reasonably clear that the cities cannot install new religious monuments, there is a fierce debate over whether existing monuments should be removed. When the Supreme Court considered this issue in Van versus Perry and McCray County versus ACLU, it did not articulate a clear general standard for deciding these types of cases. The court revisited this issue on Salazar versus Bruno, a case which considered the constitutionality of a large white Christian cross directed by members of the Veterans of Foreign Wars on federal land in the Mojave Desert. While five justices concluded that a federal judge erred in barring a congressional order, land transfer, which would place the memorial on private land, there was no majority reasoning as to why. Three justices held that the goal of avoiding governmental endorsement of religion does not require the destruction of religious symbols in a private realm. While Justice Scalia and Justice Thomas concluded that the plaintiff lacks standing to bring this complaint.
All right, so we're talking what? We're talking civics, Moors. Moors Americans need love to say, "We're studying civics." And we're talking about the Constitution. Okay? And we're talking civics, we're talking Constitution. The United States makes a separation of church and state, under what they call the Establishment Clause. Listen, anybody know who this is? This is Roy Moore. Roy Moore. Okay? Roy Moore was a Supreme Court Judge of Alabama. Supreme Court Judge. Chief Judge. And he got removed from office. Why? Because he was trying to do what? Intermix church and state. So he got removed from office. This is a judge of the Supreme Court of Alabama got removed. Because he was trying to do what? He's trying to confuse church and state. And the only thing that matters is state laws and churches what? Private law. And states what? Public law, it's standards. It's supreme. But Roy Moore wasn't trying to hear it. So what happened to him? What happened to Roy Moore? Listen, Brother Dre.
Title, "Alabama Court Votes Unanimously to Remove Roy Moore from Office."
Read again.
"Alabama Court Votes Unanimously to Remove Roy Moore from Office."
Okay, let's start a little bit about it. This was what year?
Uh, November twelfth, two thousand and three.
Okay, I'm listening.
Um, Montgomery, Alabama. Halfway through his term, the Ten Commandments Judge has been ousted as the head of Alabama's judicial system.
Read again.
"Halfway through his term, the quote-unquote Ten Commandments Judge has been ousted as the head of Alabama's judicial system." "The Alabama Court of the Judiciary voted unanimously November thirteenth to remove Roy Moore from his office as Chief Justice of the Alabama Supreme Court." Their vote followed a dramatic one-day trial that featured a former Moore ally, Alabama Attorney General Bill Pryor, now prosecuting the judge. Moore was removed for violating judicial ethics by openly flouting a higher court's order. The judge, long and outspoken advocate for displaying the Ten Commandments on government property, had been suspended since August when he defied a federal judge's order to remove a massive monument to the Ten Commandments that he had placed in the building that houses the state Supreme Court.
Paul, so Judge Roy Moore put a stone tablet out front of the court that had the Ten Commandments on it. And he refused to remove it. So what happened? The feds had to get involved, right? And they ruled against him. Then after that, his own fellow colleagues of the Alabama Supreme Court also ruled unanimously to remove him as well. Why? Because he's violating what? State laws. He was trying to intermix church and state. Okay, listen, from here, the Alabama Court.
"The Alabama Court of the Judiciary voted unanimously November thirteenth to remove Roy Moore from his office as Chief Justice of the Alabama Supreme Court." Their vote followed a dramatic one-day trial that featured a former Moore ally, Alabama Attorney General Bill Pryor, now prosecuting, uh, now prosecuting the judge. "Moore was removed for violating judicial ethics by openly flouting a higher court's order." "The judge, long and outspoken advocate for displaying the Ten Commandments on government property, had been suspended since August when he defied a federal judge's order to remove a massive monument to the Ten Commandments that he had placed in the building that houses the state Supreme Court." "The five thousand two hundred eighty pound granite monument engraved with the Protestant King James Translation of the biblical commandments ultimately was removed from its central spot in the rotunda of the Alabama State Judicial Building." "Moors fellow justices on the Alabama Supreme Court overruled his decision to keep the monument in place."
You see what the judges are doing? They're enforcing state laws over what? Church laws. Continue.
Shortly after the judiciary court's decision, November thirteenth, Moore told a group of supporters and journalists that he had a quote-unquote "absolute no regrets." "I had done what I was sworn to do." Trial. Uh, yet during his trial, he told the judiciary court he would return the monument to public view if he were reinstated as Chief Justice. William Thompson, presiding judge of the Court of the Judiciary, said Moore had given him and his colleagues no other choice. "The chief justice placed himself above the law," he said. He also said, "The court's decision was made easier because Moore showed no signs of contrition for his action."
Paul, so therefore, what are they saying? Catch it, catch it. He said, "The chief justice placed himself above the law." So what was Roy Moore trying to enforce? Ten Commandments. He was saying, "Religion was above state laws." You see what's happening? He was trying to say, "The church religious laws of the Ten Commandment was above the state laws." And he got removed because of that. By who? Judges. I'm gonna make a point here in a moment. Listen, keep that in mind, judges removed him. Start right here.
Uh, "William Thompson, presiding judge of the Court of the Judiciary, said Moore had given him and his colleagues no other choice." "The chief justice placed himself above the law," he said. "He also said, 'The court's decision was made easier because Moore showed no signs of contrition for his action.'" "The president of a Washington-based group whose attorneys helped argue the original case against Moore's monument said the court's decision was the final vindication of their lawsuit." "The Court of the Judiciary has served to keep the cause of justice," said Barry Lynn of Americans United, "for separation of church and state," in a press release.
Paul, read again.
"The Court of the Judiciary has served the cause of justice," said Barry Lynn of Americans United, "for separation of church and state," in a press release. "Moore flagrantly announced his intention to violate federal court order, federal court, uh, federal court's order, made a mockery of the legal system, and created an unseemingly media circus." "Religious right leader James Kennedy of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, called the judge's removal a deplorable example of judicial tyranny." "Uh, Moore is being punished for upholding the rule of law, for following the will of the voters, for faithfully upholding his oath of office, and for refusing to vouch for tyranny," Kennedy said. "For too long, too many elected officials have bowed in submission to lawless federal court ethics that set aside life and liberty. They have stood by as, case by case, God and biblical morality have been removed from public life. At some point, the representatives of the people must defend the rule of law and oppose tyranny."
Paul, so they're trying to say that church law is equivalent or above state laws. Roy Moore took his oath to what? Constitution of Alabama and the United States. That's who he took his oath to. His delegation of authority orders was to do what? Enforce the law of the state. But once he got in office, he tried to bring what with him? Ten Commandments, and it got thrown out. It was inadmissible. You gotta understand what's happening here. I'm gonna make a point here. Listen.
Although most legal observers had believed the court would issue some sort of ruling against Moore, the panel had several options from which it could have chosen. Removal required a unanimous vote, but other options for punishment, such as further suspension or censure, would have only required, would have required only a majority.
Paul, read that again.
Although most legal observers had believed the court would issue some sort of ruling against Moore, the panel had several options from which it could have chosen. Removal required a unanimous vote, but other options for punishment, such as further suspension or censure, would have required only a majority.
So, so let me get this right. The judges could've got together and known he needed a majority vote to suspend him. But instead, the judges got together and removed him, and they had to be unanimous. Which means they knew he had to go. They did not even take the fact, they could've took a lesser decision just to have him suspended. And it wouldn't have required all the judges to agree, just majority vote. And all of them got together and said, "He has to go." Why? Because he was unfit to be a judge, because he was judging people based upon a biblical book versus the Constitution of the state of Alabama and of the United States that he had taken an oath to. You see? You gotta see what's happening here. They removed him. And they had other options. I'm gonna make a point here in a moment. Continue.
Okay, "Moore was elected Chief Justice on the state Supreme Court in two thousand, campaigning as the Ten Commandments Judge. After a highly publicized battle over a similar display in his courtroom when he was a county magistrate, Alabama is one of the few states that elects its Supreme Court justices. After his election to the Supreme Court, Moore had the monument crafted and placed in the courthouse in the middle of the night on July thirty-first, two thousand and one. A group of Alabama attorneys and three national civil rights organizations then sued Moore, saying the monument was a violation of the Constitution's ban on government establishment of religion."
You see what the lawyers did? They invoked what? The Government Establishment Clause. You see that? Those attorneys went straight to the Government Establishment Clause. We read that early on. Must be a separation of church and state. You see? The church is not above the state, and the church is not equivalent with the state. The church is second. The state protects the church's rights. But the church does not have rights over the state. And anybody sitting in public office plays their allegiance to what? The Constitution and the bylaws of what? The state. Your religious practice is your own private preference, but you can't bring your private law into a public law venue. You see? So he got removed. Listen, from the top.
"After his decision to the Supreme Court, Moore had the monument crafted and placed in the courthouse in the middle of the night on July thirty-first, two thousand and one. A group of Alabama attorneys and three national civil rights organizations then sued Moore, saying the monument was a violation of the Constitution's ban on government establishment of religion. Last year, U.S. District Judge Myron Thompson agreed and ordered the monument removed."
Paul, so United States District Judge. Who is that? The federal judges. They invoked what? The Constitution. First Amendment says what? Can't put, okay, let's go back to it. Listen, let's go to it. Just so the Moors don't read. Okay, First Amendment. Uh, Brother Joseph?
"Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion."
So you cannot use religion as law. It's not respected, it's not recognized as public law. Listen, I'm gonna make a point here shortly. Listen.
"Last year, U.S. District Judge Myron Thompson agreed and ordered the monument removed. However, he delayed implementation of his own order pending review by a higher court. In July, a panel of the Atlanta-based Eleventh U.S. Circuit Court of Appeals unanimously upheld Thompson's ruling. Thompson then issued the August deadline for the monument's removal. Moore claimed that removing it would violate his oath of office, believing he believed the Alabama Constitution required him to acknowledge God."
Listen. He's supposed to acknowledge what? The Constitution. And his private law, he acknowledges God or his private time when he doesn't have that robe on. You see? Continue.
"Moore had continued to receive his one hundred seventy thousand dollar annual salary during his suspension. That will now end. Republican gov-, uh, Governor Bob Riley will appoint a judge to take Moore's place on the state's high court. The Court of the Judiciary is an ad hoc panel that meets only to consider such cases of ethics charges against a sitting judge. It is made up of nine members who are a mix of judges, lawyers, and laypeople elected by their peers or appointed by state office holders. Moore may appeal to have the case reheard by his colleagues on the Alabama Supreme Court. They could choose to recuse themselves from the case, in which, in which case, a special court would be either appointed by Governor Bob Riley or chosen by the justices themselves. Moore will also face a battle to retain his credentials as a lawyer. Richard Cohen of the Southern Poverty Law Center, another one of the groups involved in the original lawsuit, reportedly said his organization will file a petition with the Alabama Bar Association to have Moore disbarred."
Okay. So not only did the federal courts tell Roy Moore to remove the Ten Commandments monument, but its own constituents of the Supreme Court of Alabama also voted to remove the Ten Commandments and remove Roy Moore. You see what's happening here? Why? Because there must be a separation of what? Church and state. Why? Because that's what? Law. Okay, now I said I was gonna make a point. If the judges won't even allow someone like Roy Moore, who's a good old boy, if Roy Moore, listen to me, listen to me. If the judges vote against this dude and say, "He can't put church above the state because he's confusing the two," then what makes Moors think they can put their temples above the United States? Listen to what I'm saying. If Roy Moore could not enforce church over the state, or to say that church is equivalent with the state, then what makes Moors think they was ever gonna be to enforce their rights on their religious temple? The state, if they were a separate nation away from the United States when they were claiming all their rights derived through a temple, which is a religious order. So if the judges didn't let this dude be able to practice religion as having superior power or authority, then how is Moors ever gonna think they was gonna have superior power or authority through a temple? Listen, what do I have up here? Okay, for educational purposes, all right? Please listen to me. Listen to me closely, because I know Moors are sensitive. What do I have up here? I have the Maryland Moors, right? Maryland Moors? This is their website. It's a public website, right? What do they have in their hands? These Maryland Moors have nothing but the United States of America flag in their hand. You know what that's called? Surrendered. Not only have they surrendered, because they're flying the flag of a colonist who colonized them, and now they call themselves what? Americans. Listen. We're gonna talk about separation of church and state, they call themselves what? "We are Americans." Moors, American Moors. But the International Court of Justice recognizes you as Moroccans. Your treaties recognize you as Moroccans, and Moors keep saying they're Americans. That's called what? Acquiescence. That's capitulation. Acquiescence. That's capitulation. And you showing through your own demonstration that you're waving this flag. This is a surrender flag. The United States of America's flag is a surrender flag. But they're intermixing what? Both church and state. Isn't that correct? Okay, alright. So we start to talk about the Maryland Moors. Where they start to intermix church and state. Because they're all at church. But they keep saying it's a state. These are beautiful Moors. These are all our beautiful people. Intermixing church and state. Why do I say that? I just showed you they're waving flags. That's a political type of symb- symbology, right? Okay, listen. So now you come down here. And what's happening? One minute they're waving this flag. The next minute they're waving what flag? This flag. King Morocco. Now wait a minute. You wave a surrender flag and then you wave a kingdom of Morocco flag and which the King Morocco don't even recognize Moors whatsoever. What's my point here? The Moors are saying they're Muslims and Muslims, et cetera. And they're still intermixing political symbolism. So they're intermixing what? Church and state, but yet the King Morocco don't even recognize Moors whatsoever unless they put them on a status of what? Berber. The King Morocco recognizes you as a Berber. Who are Berbers? That's a derogatory term to say you're uncivilized. Meaning you have not recognized the external state. So the Moors all over the place are intermixing church and state, even though this state of the King Morocco don't even recognize Moors. And the United States of America doesn't recognize Moors as having a separate nationality. And that's why these Moors of Maryland have capitulated and they have agreed to be, to surrender, because they call themselves what? We are Americans. But your treaty say you're Moroccan. You're intermixing church and state and telling everybody birthright come through the temple, which is not true. But the worst part is you're surrendering because you're waving a surrender flag of the United States of America. Listen to me. Listen to me. Let's go deeper. Let's go back over to Judge De Castro. Okay? Judge De Castro on page one fifty-three. Okay, one fifty-three. We're gonna talk about historic ties with Morocco. Not America. Morocco. Moors are where? In where? In Morocco. They're not in America. America's what you call a jurisdiction. But your birth jurisdiction of your birth rights is Moroccan, therefore you're in Morocco. So Judge De Castro is gonna talk about what? Historic ties with Morocco. We're gonna read a little bit of this.
Brother Dre. Historic ties with Morocco. Morocco's assertion of rights of sovereignty over Western Sahara called for the examination as a question of fact of the way in which those rights had been acquired and whether they still existed at the time of colonization.
So therefore Judge De Castro off the top is talking historic ties with Morocco. Historic. With who? Morocco. Not America. America's not historic. The United States of America wasn't even founded technically until after seventeen seventy-seven, after the Sultan of Morocco recognized the thirteen colonies in seventeen seventy-seven. More specifically, December twentieth seventeen seventy-seven. There would be no United States of America. There would be no, the word America wouldn't even exist if it wasn't for the Sultan even recognizing the word America, because it's a brand new word on planet Earth. It's barely five hundred years old. Who created the word America? Martin Wozniak Mueller, the mapmaker from Germany. He named America after who? Ameriko Vespucci. Everybody knows this. The continent was named by the colonists after Ameriko Vespucci. Listen to me. So how can the word America be historic? It's not. You know it's historic? Morocco, even the judges are saying Morocco's historic. America's not historic as a name. The land is ancient. The word America or American is not ancient. It's a new name on planet Earth. It's barely five hundred years old. So how the hell are Moors who claim to be indigenous keep saying they're Americans? Listen, Dre.
It was thus for Morocco as the claimant approved to the satisfaction of the court when and how the Moroccan Empire had acquired Western Sahara.
Pause. So let's trade, let's get an understanding here. Let's get a proper concept and context. Even though we're talking about Western Sahara, here's what I want the Moors to understand. When we're talking about historic ties with Morocco, the Moors, i.e. the Moroccans, who emerged as a sovereign independent state, will have to prove that the empire Morocco is historic. Well, guess what? They talked about this in nineteen seventy-five somewhat. Listen, from the top again, your brother.
It was thus for Morocco as the claimant approved to the satisfaction of the court when and how the Moroccan Empire had acquired Western Sahara.
So it's the Moroccan Empire. It's the Moroccan Empire of what? Morocco. You see that? Historic ties with Morocco, which is what? The Moroccan Empire. Did they say the American Empire? No. How the hell Moors keep calling themselves American and everything we know is about Morocco and Moroccans? Listen, because we gotta prove this. So it's all about the Moroccan Empire. We have to prove how it was acquired. Okay, how, how can we prove that all the territories is Morocco? From the top again, brother Dre.
It was thus for Morocco as the claimant approved to the satisfaction of the court when and how the Moroccan Empire had acquired Western Sahara. Was it by conquest? Was there a true de bioc- de balacio of the tribes of the Sahara? Was it by session? If so, by what treaties? Was it by occupation? Was the Sahara territorial?
Pause. Let's read the second paragraph.
For the purpose of determining whether Western Sahara was ever incorporated in the Sharifian Empire, it is necessary to inquire how Morocco took possession of it.
Pause. So we're talking Sharifian Empire, right? We're talking Moroccan Empire, Morocco. Listen to the question. This is very important. Moors gotta pay attention. If we're at the ICJ fighting the Congress, because the Congress say, "This ain't Morocco." Now the Moors have to prove, okay, yes, it is Morocco. Well, how do we prove it? Look what the judge questioned, the judge is asking. Pretend like they're talking to the Moors right now. Listen. It was thus for Morocco as the claimant to prove to the satisfaction of the court when and how the Moroccan Empire had acquired what the Moors commonly call America. How did the Moors acquire the continent that's commonly called America? Well, my question to you first is before Christopher Columbus and Ameriko Vespucci and Martin Wozniak Mueller called it America, what was the name of the land before fifteen oh seven? Oh, people don't wanna answer that question. Well, it's easy to know, because the judge just told you it's what? Historically known as what? Morocco, because Morocco is what? An empire. You're standing on the empire right now. That people keep calling America, but that's a colonial name. And you keep taking on the colonist's last name. Listen. Watch this question. It was thus for Morocco as the claimant to prove to the satisfaction of the court when and how the Moroccan Empire had acquired Western Sahara. But you can replace Western Sahara with any territory. Let's say Europe. Let's say America. Let's say parts of Africa. Let's say the surrounding islands. Just replace the word Western Sahara. Now look at what the judge is asking this question, but pretend like the Moors are standing in court. And ICJ is asking this question, said, "Okay. Did you acquire the land? Was it by conquest?" Talking to the Moors. Did you acquire the land by conquest? Was there a true de balacio of the tribes of the, of the land? Was it by session? Listen. If so, by what treaties? Was it by occupation? Was it Sahara territorial? Or was it any territory, territorial on planet Earth? What the judges are asking Moors this question at the ICJ because the Moors are trying to reclaim the empire Morocco. And the Congress say, "No, it's not empire Morocco. It's America." The Congress say, "No, it's not empire Morocco. It's Europe." Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So how do Moors prove that it's the empire Morocco? Do you see what the judge threw in here? You see how he put this in here? He said, "Was it by session? If so, by what treaties?" See how he's talking to the Moors? At the same time, he's talking to the king of the king of Morocco. And he knows the king of the King Morocco cannot lay claim retroactively backwards to the land because the king of the King Morocco is not the Sultan. And the king of King Morocco is not what? It's not the empire. They claim to be the kingdom. Would a treaty say who's the ruler? Sultan. The treaty says the Moroccan Empire and not the Moroccan Kingdom. You gotta catch how the judge is setting the King Morocco up. He's talking to King Morocco, "Are you the empire or are you the kingdom? Are you a king or are you the Sultan?" Matter of fact, you know how you can answer a question? Pull out these treaties and show me the treaties where it says anything about you being a king or kingdom. And it does not exist in what? The treaties. But you know what else is in the treaties? When we say, "Well, how do the Moors know that they own all this land?" Okay, now you go to Treaty Madrid, eighteen eighty. You go to Treaty Madrid in eighteen eighty, right? Convention signed in Madrid, July third, eighteen eighty, of Morocco, right? Right? Okay, so this is about who? It's about who? Whose names is in here? Whose names is in here? Let, let's just read the names of the people that signed this treaty. Where was the United States of America? Germany, Prussia, Austria, Hungary, Belgians, Denmark, Spain, France, United Kingdom of Great Britain, Ireland, Italy, the Netherlands, Portugal, Sweden, and Norway, all sides along who? The Sultan of Morocco. So all of these European states. Right? Signing this treaty, you go down to what? Article seven, section two tells you that the Europeans recognize the spaces belonging to who? Okay, just a moment. Article seven. In case the ICJ is asking the Moors, "How do you know all this land belong to you?" Okay, uh, brother Joseph?
Article seven, foreign representatives shall inform the Sultan's Minister of Foreign Affairs in writing of any selections of an employee made by them.
So they come out to Sultan's Minister of Foreign Affairs. Listen.
They shall furnish annually to the said minister a list of the names of the persons protected by them or by their agents throughout the states of the Sultan of Morocco.
Pause. Read again.
They shall furnish annually-
Who's the "they"? The twelve signatory powers, European powers shall do what?
They shall furnish annually to the said minister a list of the names of the persons protected by them or by their agents throughout the states of the Sultan of Morocco.
So the states plural, the states plural, all the signatory powers, all the states plural, they belong to who? It's throughout the states of who? The Sultan of Morocco. You see that? This is written in the treaty. Treaties are pretty volatile. You see? So you go back over to the judge, and the judge is asking the Moors this question, right? So pretend the Moors are standing here. And it says, "It was thus for Morocco as the claimant approved to the satisfaction of the court when and how the Moroccan Empire had acquired all the continents, plural. Was it by conquest? Was there a true de balacio of the tribes of the continents? Was it by session? If so, by what treaties?" So the Europeans did what? They ceded their states to the Sultan by what? Treaty. You see that? The European states have ceded their states to the Sultan by treaty. So you see how the question's already answered? This is what the Moors gotta understand. But what's the name of the state? It's Morocco, right? Said the Moroccan Empire. What's the name of the state? Historic ties with who? Morocco. So the Moors have to have a historic tie to what? Morocco, which is what? The state. If the Moors are not tied to the state by allegiance, then we can't say that we own the territory. If the Moors were not sitting in the seat of Sultan, then we couldn't say that the European states belonged to the Sultan of Morocco because we wasn't even recognizing a Sultan. It hadn't been a Sultan since nineteen fifty-six. My fifth step down, nineteen fifty-six. We did not reinstate the Sultan again until what year? Twenty twenty-four. It's been nearly sixty-eight years since there've been a Sultan. And who's the Sultan now? Listen. Who's the Sultan? The Sultan is Abdul Smith Al Qadir, who was elected by the Moroccans. Not Americans. Who elected the Sultan? Moroccans. Listen. Who elected the Sultan? Moroccans. Not, 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 not Americans. The Sultan was elected by who? Moroccans and not, not Americans. Moors are calling themselves Americans instead of Moroccans. Going back to the judge, listen. It must be a what? Historic tie with Morocco, not a historic tie to America, because America's not historic. You see they're using this word tie again? You gotta catch what's happening here. We must have a historic tie to Morocco as a nationality of what? Moroccan. Because the Moroccan Empire, in order for us to answer the question, to say, "We're enforcing our treaties." Who can, only people can enforce the treaties. It's Moroccans. Only Moroccans can enforce the treaties. And a Sultan has to be sitting in the seat of Morocco itself. It must be a Sultan tied to Morocco. So how the hell are the Moors gonna enforce a dang long treaty? The Moors run around talking about, "We're enforcing a treaty of peace and friendship." Okay, who was the Sultan? And you're standing here what? You're trying to enforce Moroccan treaties simultaneously calling yourself what? Americans. Literally, you call yourself Moorish Americans. Instead of just simply what? Moroccans. But you know why you can call yourself Moroccans? Because the FBI infiltrated and told you to come out of there and call yourself what? Americanized. And now your former Moors, such as Resolution Seventy-Five of nineteen thirty-three, reads from South Carolina, or should I say from Philadelphia, says what? You're now former Moors. You're now Americanized. And this is why Moors keep saying they're Americans. They waving what? A surrender flag. You're Moroccans. This is a start to close out. What, what do I have here? Noah, let's read this.
International Court of Justice. Case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. France versus United States of America, judgment of August twenty-seventh nineteen fifty-two.
So what's happening here? This is the ICJ, a ruling, a judgment, case ball. Case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. So United States of America is in Morocco. Therefore, the land is Morocco and the people are what? Moroccan. Who's Moroccan? The indigenous people. Are Moroccans and who are the colonists? I.e. the settlers in Morocco is who? The Americans. The Sultan recognized him as Americans in seventeen seventy-seven. You gotta understand what's happening. Moors don't know that there's things between Moroccans and Americans. They run around saying they're the Americans. And even the United States of America's standing there in Morocco and Moors keep standing there in America. Even the United States of America's standing there in Morocco. Why are Moors standing there in America? Because the FBI is still involved. It's gotta get the Moors to do what? Capitulate. It's gotta get the Moors to do what? Acquiesce to call themselves Americans. Listen, I'm gonna prove it. In this case, it said the Moors have acquiesced. It says Morocco as a state has also acquiesced. Listen, on page one ninety-seven. One ninety-seven of the judgment. Look what, look what the judge is saying in nineteen fifty-two about the Moors and the Empire Morocco. Dre.
In nineteen oh six, the twelve powers that Al Dusseris all exercised capitulatory rights and privileges to the extent that they were prescribed either by the general treaty with Great Britain of eighteen fifty-six or by the Spanish treaty of eighteen sixty-one. They did so by virtue of direct treaty grant, as in the case of Great Britain or Spain or by richer of most favored nation clauses, as in the case of the United States or without treaty rights, but with the consent or acquiescence of Morocco, as in the case of certain other states. Accordingly, the Act of Al Dusseris presupposed the existence of the regime of capitulations, including the rights of consul jurisdiction and many of its provisions assigned particular functions to the then existing consulate tribunals. Reference has been made in the course of the argument to Articles nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-nine, forty-five, fifty-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-seven, ninety-one, one oh one, one oh two, and one nineteen. For example, chapter five, which deals with the customs of the empire and the repossession of fraud and smuggling, contains Article one oh two, which provides um, every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by consulate, on foreigners by consulate jurisdiction and on Moors, and on Moors subjects by Sharifian jurisdiction. In the conditions, in the conditions which existed at the time, this article made it necessary for the prosecution of nationals of the twelve powers for fraud and smuggling to be dealt with in the consulate courts.
Pause. So what have we learned this far? Now I'm gonna work it backwards. First of all, Article one oh two of the Act of Al Dusseris that your Moorish American teachers won't tell you about says that every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by consulate jurisdiction. Who are the foreigners? Americans. Americans where? In Morocco. Every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by consulate jurisdiction and on Moors subjects by Sharifian jurisdiction. Who's Sharifian jurisdiction? The Sultan's jurisdiction. His majesty the Sultan has jurisdiction of all Moors subjects. On Article one oh two, listen. So the ICJ continues to say, in the conditions which existed at the time, this Article one oh two made it necessary for the prosecution of nationals of the twelve powers. Who are the twelve powers? The European powers. Such as Americans, Canadians, British, French, German, et cetera. So therefore the Moors supposed to prosecute the nationals of the twelve powers. That's the consulate courts for Moors. Now working it backwards. Listen to what happened to the Moors. It says right here on page one ninety-seven that the Moors, they're what? It says that the Moors were in the status of capitulation, capitulatory, right? Said the Moors had consented and acquiesced. Said the Moors and the, the Moors and the Arab Morocco had consented or acquiesces of Morocco that we consented under what? Capitulation or consent. So we acquiesced, right? Under capitulations and then we consented because the Sultan had signed treaties that allowed the Europeans to do what? Naturalize the Moors. And the treaty in Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one, allowed the Europeans to naturalize the Moors. That's called consent of a treaty. But the Moors also acquiesced because they did what? They have not tried to be caught in the heist and enforced the treaty in Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one, to what? Return to Morocco and pledge their allegiance to the Empire Morocco state. So listen, as I start to close out, what do these words acquiesces mean? What does acquiesces mean? What does capitulation mean? Listen. I'll start to close out. What does capitulation mean? Brother, uh, Joseph.
Capitulation, noun, the action of surrendering or ceasing to resist an opponent or demand.
Read again.
Capitulation, noun, the action of surrendering or ceasing to resist an opponent or demand.
Similar.
Surrender, submission, yielding, succumbing.
So therefore the Moors, under the ICJ case, they're Moors. What are they saying the Moors did? They're saying these Moors did what? Were under what? Capitulations. What does capitulation mean? Okay, let's go back to it. Capitulation mean what? It's an action of surrendering. It's an action of surrendering. Okay, let's go back to the Maryland Moors. No disrespect, but we gotta talk about this. The Maryland Moors are saying they're Americans. They're saying they're also Moorish Americans. So all Moorish Americans who keep calling themselves Americans have done what? What do they keep doing? They're flying what? A surrender flag. You see that? That's a surrender flag. That flag does not represent the Empire Morocco, does it? Is that a Moroccan flag? Yes or no?
No.
No. So there's a surrender flag under capitulation. I don't make this stuff up. This is the ICJ is saying about Moors. Listen. Then they got this word acquiesces, right? They're talking about Morocco and the Moors. Listen. So I start to close out. What does acquiesces mean? Acquiesces mean what? Joseph.
Acquiesce, verb, accept something without protest.
So the Moors are not protesting, are they? Because the Moors too busy doing what? Where are the Moors going? Waving the United States of America flag. Under symbolism, that's a political symbolism that you've accepted your surrender status. You surrendered by flying that flag. You acquiesced. I don't make this stuff up. The ICJ is saying this. About what? Morocco the state has acquiesced. The Morocco the state has what? Surrendered. Because Moors have, are flying the United States of America's flag while falsely, listen to me, falsely, listen to me, falsely, falsely turn around and put our ignorance on display and say that the Kingdom of Morocco's flag is their national flag and the King Morocco does not recognize Moorish Americans whatsoever. They're intermissing church and state. And this is not even your national state. King Morocco don't recognize you. And this is why you keep flying the United States of America's flag. You see that? United States of America's flag is a surrender flag. And the ICJ called this out in nineteen fifty-two and said the Moors have what? Capitulated and they've acquiesced to their surrender status. All because what? All the Moors are stuck in the church. They have not done what? They, they, the Moors are not interested. Listen. Moors Americans are not interested in decolonization. They're interested in what? Surrender. The Moors have surrendered to the United States of America. Let's go back up. This is Moors are saying, all the Moors keep saying they're what? Americans. Isn't that what they're saying? All the Moors saying they're Americans. That's surrender status. So the Moors have to take the time to understand this as, as I close out. If we don't understand how to separate church and state, first of all, we're gonna remain colonized, right down here. We remain colonized people and we can't separate church and state. We must pledge allegiance to the state and then have our what? Private, right? Private law allegiance to whatever religion you choose. But what comes first? The state. Even the United States don't even allow their own judges to put this, put the church above the state. So how is it more think they gonna put a temple above the United States? It'll never happen. But what did Judge De Castro tell you? As I start to close out, listen, please. What did Judge De Castro tell you? It's about your historic tie with Morocco. That's the answer to the test. And it's all about what? It's all about your treaties. It's all about your treaties of the Moroccan empire for Moroccans. That's the answer to the test. But guess what? There are no Moroccans in the Moorish Science Temple. Is there? No. I ain't with that. Islam.
Islam.